Let me go ahead and come back to the motion to come back into regular session. Motion, the second amendment may miss my turn to be called.
Mr. Chairman, first.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I turned on, yes. I'm ready.
Yes, okay. We state this.
There's no sound out there.
I understand that, ma'am. We're going to go ahead and proceed though because we are waiting in maybe a few more minutes, but there are people in here that are participating in the public comments that we don't want to miss out on anybody's opportunity to speak. So, we apologize for that. We're working as fast as we can, but we're going to go ahead and move forward with staff's presentation of the public hearing, and then we'll go, and hopefully we'll step into public comments and the, you'll be able to hear outside. So, if anything else, Mr. Behill, you are ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll refer you back, respectfully refer you back to page five of the Planning Director's staff report. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll begin with the top of page five. The FCC, the Council, and the National Conference of State Historic Preservation Officers executed this nationwide co-location program.
And I'm here.
Okay. Go ahead.
The FCC, the Council, and the National Conference of State Historic Preservation Officers executed this nationwide co-location programmatic agreement on March 16, 2001 to streamline the section of 106 review of co-location proposals and reduce the need for construction of new towers, thereby reducing potential effects on historic properties that would otherwise result from the construction of those unnecessary new towers. And whereas advances in technology, wireless technologies since 2001 have produced systems that use smaller antennas and compact radio, including those used in distributed antenna systems, DAS, and small cell systems which are a fraction of the size of traditional cell tower deployments and can be installed in utility points, buildings, and other existing structures as co-locations, this ordinance does not attempt to address small wired facilities. But within Tab P, a P, Nationwide Programmatic Agreement for Review of Effects on Historic Properties for Certain Undertakings Approved by the Federal Communication Commission. Number three, undertakings excluded from Section 106 Review states, undertakings that fall within the provisions listed in the following sections that are 3A, 3F, are excluded from Section 106 Review by the State Historic Preservation Officer, the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, the Commission, and the Council, and accordingly shall not be submitted to a State Historic Preservation Officer or Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for review. The determination that an exclusion applies to an undertaking should be made by an authorized individual within the applicant's organization, and applicants should retain documentation of their determination that an exclusion applies. And applicant, uh, an applicant, excuse me, under letter B, construct every replacement for an existing communication tower and any associated excavation that does not substantially increase the size of the existing tower under elements one through three of the definition defined in the co-location agreement, and that does not expand the boundaries of the least or only area or old property surrounding the tower by more than 30 feet in any direction or involve excavation outside these expanded boundaries or outside any existing accessory to the movement related to the site. For towers constructed after May 16, 2001, this exclusion applies only if the tower has completed Section 106 Review. Process and any associated environmental reviews required by the Commission's rules. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it is my belief that we are preempted by federal law and actually to the benefit of communities by minimizing the number of potential towers from doing anything to a tower that's being altered so long as they meet federal guidelines. In other words, if the proposal does not rise above the federal thresholds, our regulations, I believe, are not applicable, and we really don't have the ability to deny an application. Further, there is nothing that a county can do to federal law regarding the potential health risks. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I respectfully ask, Aneesa, now could you please pull up the redline version of the proposed amendment so we can explain what the council is? It will be under Tab... Tab C.
Sir, Mr. Behill, can you please repeat the last two paragraphs that you...
Further, there is nothing that a county can do to federal law regarding the potential health risks.
It's a lie.
We will, we will, you can ask those questions.
Mr. Chairman, if the people don't follow the rules as said in our, our Open Meetings Act regulation, this may...
All right, so we want to, Mr. Behill has made his comments, he's put his presentation together, he's going to continue with his presentation. The public will have, like I said, up to three minutes to voice your concerns, so we just kind of respectfully expect that we hold those comments till then. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, members of the public, what you have on the display screen is the proposed amendment. And so, number one, what is in black font is the existing language referenced in Article Three, Section 3.3.2, legal non-conform use, letter A, 1A, one-time expansion of less than 25 percent, and the expansion or expansions of a legal non-conform use of less than an aggregate of 25 percent of this original size or footprint is established at the time that the use became non-conform shall require a commercial zoning clearance permit. The proposed amendment is to include the red language that states exclusion, the co-location, upgrading, replacement, addition, or modification of relays, antennas, and equipment panels within an existing wireless telecommunication facility for technological or safety reasons. Number two, under Article Three, Section 3.3.2, legal non-conform use, letter A, 1, D as a data, replacement of more than 50 percent of the legal non-conforming use that is damaged or destroyed beyond 50 percent of the most recent county assessors' full value or fair market value destruction, at the time of the destruction shall apply a commercial zoning clearance permit to restore or continue the previous use which shall meet administrative review performance standards and the current building code requirements applicable to the project. The proposal is to include language that states exclusion, the complete replacement of a legal non-conforming wireless telecommunication tower for technological or safety purposes that does not increase the overall height of the tower. And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, lastly, number three, Article Four, Section 4.11.2, exclusions, number two, any existing tower, so once again, the black font is presently how it reads, any existing tower and antenna constructed prior to the adoption of these regulations unless such tower shall be abandoned pursuant to Section 4.10.1.8.5.8 or any six consecutive month period commencing after the date of enactment of this ordinance, and the co-location, upgrading, replacement, addition, or modification of relays, antennas, and equipment panels, and the towers or the height of the tower should not increase for technological or safety reasons. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, those are the proposals of the amendment before you. I'm nearing my completion of staff report, but at this particular point, I would like to refer you to Tab K, which is a handout that I provided to you just a few minutes ago.
Is this a citizen comment on the proposed for the one of T Mobile?
It would be the one of the T Mobile. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an existing application that we have in the Planning Department today. No determination has been made on this particular application. What I have provided for you is the preliminary drawing submitted for consideration or determination to the Planning Department. And what I've also provided for you is the email thread where I have been communicating with the applicant who is doing the inquiry in regards to the type of permit that may be needed. And so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will respectfully refer you to sheet... C3. I said, is it counted C3? So, what we have in front of us is an existing telecommunication facility, tower, that was approved by Tous County, I believe, in 2014, out in Tres Piedras. This is a tower of 75 feet in height. The illustration on the left shows what is presently there, while the illustration on the right shows what the proposal is. So, if I follow the strict interpretation of the existing regulations now, and it appears, obviously I haven't communicated this with the applicant, but if you could look at the drawing, and it looks at the antenna that is being proposed, it appears to be larger than the antenna on the left. If I follow the strict interpretation of the existing code that says any expansion less than 25 percent requires a commercial zoning clearance permit. That is what I'm trying to fix. I'm trying to fix that if somebody comes, and I'm trying to fix it because I believe there's conflicting language. So, what I'm trying to say, and what this is trying to accomplish, is that if you have an existing grandfather facility, an existing tower, where somebody wants to come in and either replace or add additional antennas or do modifications to that tower in regards to relays, antennas, anything to do with the tower, that it should be excluded from a permit. That's what I'm respectfully asking of you today. The communication that I've entered into with this individual began back in May 23rd, where the individual basically asked the question, "I have a modification project on an existing tower coming up in your jurisdiction, and I'm looking for clarification on what the submittal process looks like in your county. Does planning have a separate review dash approval process for projects like this? If so, is there a checklist for the supplemental submittal items needed? I've attached a copy of the preliminary construction documents discussed with your determination." My response back to the individual, which was stated on March 28, 2019, states, "As per ordinance 2018-2, existing Tous County land use regulations, Section 3.3.2, legal non-conforming use, states, a land use which was lawful before the Tous County land use regulation were passed or under an existing land use regulation, or which could be prohibited regulator restricted under the terms of the new regulation and subsequent amendments to the regulations that is permitted. The land use does not have been abandoned. Under letter A, it speaks about replacement or expansion, and it speaks about, number one, a required letter determination, and then it goes on to speak about letter A, the one time less expansion of less than 25 percent, and letter B, the expansion of more than 25 percent. So, I concluded my email to indicate our records show that the monopane telecommunication tower and antennas received a conditional approval from the Tous County Planning Commission on August 8, 2014. The Planning Department is of the belief that the use has not been abandoned since approval. The determination as to the type of zoning permit required is dependent on your findings as to whether the placement of the proposed antenna is less than an aggregate of 25 percent expansion, or whether the placement of the proposed antenna is in excess of an aggregate of 25 percent. Please provide me with the existing amount of antennas and the associated square footage, and please provide me with the number of proposed new antennas and the associated square footage, so that a determination can be made as to whether you are below or in excess of a 25 percent expansion." The applicant's response, "This project is to remove and replace a project with no net gain to total number of appurtenances." So, my response, which I just sent off yesterday, "I have created a checklist in relation to your submittal. Please provide responses to the following. State whether the co-location or modification is a substantial change in accordance with the FCC definition. In regards to a summary of the site location, the address you have provided, the address is being 383, 383, 93, Highway 285, and the ownership of the structure to which co-location or modification applies to as being Tower Manager, American Tower Corporation, and Lisi as being T-Mobile. However, the property owner name, address, and city, state, and zip are identified as unknown in sheet T1. Please identify the property owner name, address, city, state, zip, and property owner. Provide a written summary of work to be completed on site. Advise as to whether the co-location or modification will defeat the effect of existing concealment elements. Will co-location or modification equipment require lighting? Provide a post-installation maintenance schedule. Has a structural analysis been performed to advise of the existing compounds are adequate to support the co-location or modification? Primary and secondary contact information for wireless facilities, project orderings, and lastly, emergency contact information in case a tower co-location creates disruption." So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a sampling of a checklist that we in the Planning Department are utilizing when somebody comes in and requests the co-location on an existing wireless telecommunication facility. This is a sample checklist that the FCC has created, and we're using this as a guide. So, now, based on the responses that the applicant provides us, I'm leaning the direction to say that this is not true to their expansion, respectfully, and I'm leaning to award the applicant the approval to simply replace an existing antenna with a new antenna. But I just wanted to use this as an example of where a strict interpretation where it says any expansion may require or may trigger a commercial zoning clearance permit or a special use permit. I want to use one more example before I yield in my presentation. We have a subsequent carrier who wanted to do, increase a existing concrete slab of 80 square feet for a tower that is located next to the water storage tanks in the tunnel. The individual wanted to increase the square footage of the concrete slab for the purposes of putting in a backup generator in the event that the power went down so they would have continuous cell service. The proposal was to increase the concrete slab from 80 square feet to 100 square feet, an increase of 20 percent square feet. Again, strict or legal interpretation of the code says that any expansion would require at minimum that's less than a 25 percent expansion, it would require a commercial zoning clearance I waived the commercial zoning clearance permit requirement because I did not feel it was necessary for the person to go down the road of a commercial zoning clearance permit to increase a concrete slab by 20 square feet. You've heard me distinguish before you today, commercial zoning clearance permit, special use permit. I'm here to tell you that the differences are, a commercial zoning clearance permit and a special use permit require the exact same submittal information, the very same things. The distinction is to say that a commercial zoning clearance permit can be approved administratively in-house by other, by myself as the Planning Director or a designated, which could be Mr. Padilla, our planner in the office. A special use permit requires a public hearing. So, those are the distinctions. You've heard me state them repeatedly during my presentation, commercial zoning clearance permit or special use permit. The big distinction is one requires a public hearing, the other one does not. So, therefore, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that concludes our presentation. I believe that I've given you what I believe could be the Planning Department's argument as to what we believe is a conflict or contradiction in our existing land use code. We are merely trying to claim what we believe is a conflict in the code. And having said that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
You should open the floor. Mr. Chair, O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Behill. So, currently then, if we were to approve this, any modifications fall under a commercial permit, not subject to zoning? My question is, you are able to approve this sign-off under what permit?
And so, that's the big question. There's no language right now that gives me direction other than language in the land use code, and I'm going to refer to you a specific section that I've utilized. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell, under the existing land use code for this 2018-2 land use regulations, I respectfully refer to Section 1.3.1, which is the duties and responsibilities of decision makers, entities, specifically letter L. The Planning Director, in his or whole sole discretion, may waive any applications submittal and performance standard requirements of an applicant for a commercial zoning clearance permit, or an administrative zoning clearance permit, or a special use zoning permit, or a major development zoning permit, and a rezoning application under these regulations. The waiver may include otherwise required studies, maps, surveys, records, reports, and other submission materials in connection with the application that are not applicable, or are redundant or unnecessary for the Planning Department to evaluate or make a findings with regard to the application. A request for a waiver of any permit application requirement must be made in writing by the applicant incurred in by the reviewing staff member and approved in writing by the Planning Director. The Planning Director's written approval shall state the reason or reasons the requirements are waived, reference specific sections being waived, and shall be made part of the permit application. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I believe that based on this respective section 1.3.1, letter L, which is already in the land use regulation, it gives myself as a planning director or my designated, the ability to waive the permit requirement.
Right, so what permit is applied in this case? That's what I'm trying to understand because I understand you have the authority to waive, but you've done your due diligence in asking the questions you asked the company for further clarification, so...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell, there is not a specific section in our land use code now that indicates if you are not creating an expansion. It is silent.
Because I do know under the regs, we do have the authority to placement, location, and also to review any modifications, no matter the size. So, what I hear you saying is we need a complete new set of clarifying language in our LUR for existing towers, legal, non-conforming, and new towers that may come up. Is that correct?
So, once again, let me just clarify, I'm going to address your question, which it appears is twofold. I hope that I was clear in my presentation to say new towers, all day, all night, special use permit. If you are a new tower that is coming in and choosing to do business in Tous County, why erect a new tower that you are not, you don't consider a legal non-conforming tower special use permit, public hearing. Now, in regards to existing facility, you are right. I don't have that tool in my toolbox right now that speaks that if you're not doing an increase whatsoever, what type of permit is needed. And so, I am trying to introduce this amendment to say that if there's an existing legal non-conforming use, such as an existing tower, and you want to come in and put antennas on the tower, that it should be excluded from a development permit from Tous County.
A development permit, but not...
Commercial zoning clearance permit.
You're not getting up, you're afforded to review the documents, and then waive the commercial zoning language that you, there's language that you can receive.
And so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I would attempt to apply the same that I'm applying to the tower just yet at this point. Obviously, the applicant is responsible for demonstrating to me that it is an eligible facility. Without it being an eligible facility, I would believe you would be able to report. So, the big question is, I am not waiving anything that will be required, I shouldn't say required, that I could utilize into a CISB and make an determination.
So, what did this company pay for? An application fee, permit fee?
We have not rendered an application fee to these individuals because I don't know what to fit it into. Do I fit it into a commercial zoning clearance permit? Do I fit it into a special use permit and assess on a $250 fee? We have not assessed that fee.
Mr. Behill, only for the reason that introducing this new language in the amendment will give you clarity into which way you would assess a fee. Or a non-assessing.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the intent of this amendment did not include language specific to assess an appeal. What you have in front of you is the intent of our amendment. In the event that we make a determination that no permit is required, then obviously no fee will be assessed.
Anything else for question? If not, I'll move on with...
Well, it is somewhat confusing, and what, it brings me back to what you're suggesting may not go too far enough, and that we're going to have to make additional changes to the LUR in antennas, and we're going to have to create new language for small wireless facilities of which we have no language to protect ourselves because we do have authority to review these applications. I understand we do not have the authority to deny anything. You know, that's something that FCC has told us in law. So, I'm still, I'm confused what we're, I'm confused what we're voting on to allow you to have the authority under commercial zoning because I do not want you to waive the county's authority in any regard. You still have to have review.
And so, point very well taken, and that's the... And so, point very well taken, and that's the review that I'm exercising on the T-Mobile tower, which I hope to exercise because obviously carriers still need to contact the planning department. We will make a determination at that point, and then obviously the big question is whether or not it's an eligible facility or not, or whether it's a substantial increase or substantial change. The thing that we will look at, are you increasing the height of the tower? It has nothing to do, or we just restate. We're trying to allow the co-location of additional antennas on towers. That's what we're trying to do. But I also want to clarify for you, if I do have an individual make an application for either a commercial zoning clearance permit or a special use permit, nearly all of the supplemental information that is required in either application would be not required. The land use code, when it comes to either one of those permits, and I'm going to read to you right quick. I want to read to you performance sections, which is found on Section 4.7 of the land use code, and it states, "The applicant shall provide engineered drawings, a written explanation of an analysis of all the performance standards identified in this section, or a written substantiation so by the home client." So here's a sampling of some of the questions in the special use permit for the commercial zoning clearance application. There's no impact of roads. The individuals are wanting to put antennas on their tower, not applicable. Utilities, there's already existing utilities. As long as they don't expand or excavate beyond the existing footprint, it's allowed to move forward. Water supply and quality, no water, not applicable, does not apply. The next item under the performance standards, liquid waste disposal. Every facility is an unmanned facility. Another one, does not apply. Legal access, you already have the access to get to the tower, all the good is putting an antenna on the tower, does not apply. So the point that I'm making is irregardless of whether I have the applicant go down the path of a commercial zoning clearance permit or a special use permit, I'm going to have an applicant provide me a document or an application that basically says not applicable to almost any performance standard.
So, am I correct in saying that if we approve what you're doing today, you will no longer hear any modifications to existing legal non-conforming towers? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, I'm not, that's not what I'm proposing. I'm proposing that it would not require even one of those type of permits. They still need to reach out to the planning department and advise the planning department of the intent. We at that point would make sure that the facility is an eligible facility, that is the grandfather tower, that it's not a construction of a new tower, then we would make the distinction and the separation. If it is a new tower, special use permit, public hearing all day, but if it's an existing legal non-conforming use, it will still apply or attempt to apply the questions that we're asking similar to the trespassing towers. And so, we're not waiving everything completely. We're just waiving the requirements of commercial zoning clearance application or a special use permit application. We're still trying to apply the checklist that the FCC has put in place for localities to utilize when they get approached by such entities or by such carriers.
But we still, we can still do review. This is, this is the question, and it sounds like we need a complete rework of this language. This isn't sufficient. It doesn't provide. We have the authority to charge fees for permits. You haven't waived that. You're going to be doing review for nothing. I just think we need more time to make sure that...
Vice Chair.
These issues are covered.
Mind you, and the rest of the viewing audience, Mr. Be Hill found a flaw, and he's trying to clean up something that is an ordinance that is existing that conflicts and gives an opportunity for any applicant to come in and do as they basically wish without much of our participation. That's what this is about. But you're right, there are other things that we need to go move forward with to make sure that whatever other kind of network or anything else that comes in to Taus County would have to continue. These are evolving, these can move, they can add, you can delete. These ordinances, these were put in place in 2001, but there was not as much activity technology-wise in Taus County, and they, these do not help us hold any application to be following what we want to do. This is just an addition, modification, to do what we can in our planning zoning department to make things better for us to be able to have those applicants come in. It has nothing to do with giving an opportunity. There's, I'll give you an example. We had an opportunity that we tried to change water rights from being leaving Taus County. An application was put in before Taus County made an ordinance, and they still went down south. If we don't try to make some changes right now with the existing ordinances that we have, all these things are going to come through before, under our feet before we can even take a step. So we have to take these steps to start making moves the right direction. I think our planning zoning department over the years has continued to bring in and modify and put amendments with ordinances that not comply with, it's for homes, cell towers, properties all the way around, new development. So we're continuing to make these changes, and these guys are doing everything they can when they catch something to make it beneficial for the community as a whole. They're not here, or we're not here, I don't think, as a commission to open the floodgate and let everybody and anyone come in. So there might be some misinterpretation of what you guys have all heard or what you're understanding from what was being presented today, but this is some, these are, these right here, what Mr. Be Hill is presenting to us is giving us a little bit more grip of what's coming, that's coming today. What is going to come in the future, we need to tighten that up maybe more, I don't know. But I just want to, we have public comment coming up shortly, but we want the rest of the commission to do their part as far as conversation. Sorry about that. Thank you.
I still have a question on you.
Okay.
So if we pass this amendment today, and you had this T-Mobile application, what you would do is you would determine that they are putting a new antenna on an existing tower, and then you would tell them to go ahead, or just tell me briefly what you would do if we passed the amendment today on this particular application?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, blanket one, obviously, it's my understanding that should you pass the amendment today, it will not become effective for 30 days. So with that in mind, there's been a lot of discussion, and it hasn't been spoken to yet, but Commissioner O'Donnell represents shop talks. So I can't, I don't have the luxury of sitting and taking a long time or a long period to make a determination on these particular applications. And so, my determination, irregardless of whether you pass the amendment today or not, would be to make a determination to say that it is my belief that there is not an increase taking place.
No, that's under the existing, but I just want to focus on what the result would be if we passed this amendment today, and then you get this T-Mobile application to put a new antenna on an existing tower. At that point, you wouldn't worry about 25%.
That is correct.
You would do what?
Basically, I would look at, again, as I've tried to explain to Commissioner O'Donnell, I would look to see if there's, I would cite the checklist that the FCC has provided and make sure that it's an eligible facility. I would ask questions because obviously, if there's antennas on there that are not flashing or that do not have lights on there, I certainly do want to allow somebody to come in and put antennas on there that do have flashing lights now. So those are some considerations that we would look at, and I would waive, I would then waive the requirement.
So, no flashing lights, just an antenna on an existing tower, which presumably would improve coverage. You would inform the applicant that they can move ahead with their project, you wouldn't charge them fees, and there would be no further review?
That is correct.
Okay. And...
So let me just interject with the minute commissioner and chairman and all commissioners. What brought this before you is again the conflicting language. I've emphasized the commercial zoning clearance permit, and I've emphasized the special use permit. Now let me emphasize Section 4.11.2 exclusions. It says, "Every wireless telecommunication facility located within the county, whether upon private or public lands, shall be subject to the provisions of these regulations. The following facilities, however, shall be exempt from application of the regulations for wireless telecommunication facilities. Number two, any existing tower and antenna constructed to the adoption of these regulations unless such tower shall be abandoned pursuant to Section 4.10.1.8.5 for a six consecutive month period commencing after the date of enactment of this ordinance, and the upgrading, replacement, or modification of relays, antennas, and towers for technological or safety reasons that do not exceed the dimensions, aesthetics, or aggregate power of the original structure equipment." Through my eyes, the language is already there. It allows me to make that interpretation.
Right.
To waive that requirement. And all I'm trying to say is, one section of the code says one thing, another section of the code says another. I just don't have the mesh.
Right, and you can use your discretionary authority under L to just say go ahead with it, but this would align the ordinance with itself, but also with the FCC, is that part of this?
I believe so.
Okay. And so, the FCC basically says that you got an existing tower and you're upgrading equipment to improve coverage, then the local regulatory authority is not in play, and you want to clarify that in our ordinance and fix the contradictions, and that's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Okay. But 5G requires lots more antennas, right? You know, if eventually people, eventually carriers want to do 5G, they're not going to be able to rely solely on existing towers. They're going to have to place lots more antennas on lots more stations, and we would still have the ability to review the placement of those many more antennas. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah, because they're new, because they're not going on an existing tower. Now, it may be true that sometime in the next few years, Verizon or somebody wants to begin laying the groundwork for 5G, they would ask you, I'm not sure how it works, but they might ask you, can we put, we want to put this antenna on an existing tower that will help us deploy 5G eventually with all of our more antennas, and to that you would have to say yes under the new amendment.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Right you.
Yes, Chairman, yes. I don't want to deviate from 5G because there are certain rules. You can have a high application fee, I believe it's up to $500, and these are new rules we are going to have to enact relating to small facilities, I mean to small wireless. But going back to what the issue at hand, we are allowed to have cost-based fees written into such review as you are doing, and we have no language for a separate category for these kinds of permits. So if I'm hearing you correctly, there's no fee for this company, there's no, all this interchange, all your review, all your questions, we are not able to recoup cost-based fees for you to look at these applications. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell. That is correct.
And that is a flaw in what we have before us because we are allowed to stay under our local authority to have cost-based fees on these kinds of applications. And if you're telling me there won't be a permit, we're not charging them anything, this is going to be an undue burden for you. You're not going to be able to recoup your fees when you're looking at these applications. And I surely don't want to, if you mean waive requirements, that does not mean you're going to forego the checklist that the FCC is giving you. Is that correct?
That's correct, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, and you know, with all the respect, with all the respect, Mr. Padilla and I and members of the planning staff meet for hours upon hours, not necessarily with people who are approaching us for this type of application, but any type of development permit really that's proposed, or whether it's a building permit, we meet with people upon hours upon hours, but no fees. So it's not unusual for us to meet or give guidance or direction, but no fees are recuperated. Hence, for example, one of the items that's on the agenda that we respectfully requested that they get tabled indefinitely, Mr. Padilla and I are meeting with members of this board tomorrow that we envisioned to be almost a two to three hour meeting, but no fees going to be recovered. So that is the nature of our job in the planning department, that we meet with the public and provide guidance and assistance, and a lot of times, there's no fees that are recuperated and provided that guidance or assistance.
However, we're talking about FCC rules and regulations, and what is allowed, and cost-based fees to review such applications are permitted, and so I see that as a huge missing link, not talking about neighborhood associations and your other meetings with the public, but we have the authority to enact these permit, these fees, but we need permit language, and so I'm just not sure we're ready to vote on this because there's a lot of unanswered questions, and you deserve, we deserve to have cost-based fees in these applications.
I appreciate that, and you also have some other commissioners that want to comment. I'm glad you saw maybe a flaw, but you know, that's not part of the amendment that's here today presented, so let's go ahead and move forward. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree that there are special projects, maybe the fees should be looked at, but however, what's, for us today in ordinance 2019-04, there's nothing about that but to go to now vice chair's idea of imposing fees related to this would be a future ordinance and a future public hearing. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, absolutely. We stand receptive to, as Chairman Gago indicated, this is an evolving document. Since 2014, when we did the first revision to the land use regulations since 2005, we have had a new land use code in 2014, we have had a new land use code in 2015, we have had an amendment in 2016, and we did a new land use code in 2018. That is just a sign that our document evolves based on the public and based on applications that we have. We are certainly receptive to coming back before you, if it is the direction of the commission and obviously the direction of the manager, we're certainly receptive to coming back before you with a subsequent amendment, and possibly that amendment may include language for small wireless facilities, which this ordinance does not address at this point.
So, a summary of what we would be considering today, ordinance 2019-04, you have found two conflicting guidelines. You're providing them to what the standard is, and you're bringing in the FCC standards, which you are required to do in, basically by reference into the land use regulations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's pretty much in the three items, that's the summary, and that's pretty much what we are considering in ordinance 2019-04. It doesn't have anything about fees, it doesn't have anything about restricting certain types of anything else. All it's doing is giving you clarification between the two items and bringing in required federal requirements. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so with that, I'd also like to hear from our attorney to make sure that his thoughts, his opinion coincides with our planning department.
Thank you, Commissioners, Commissioners and members of the public, Edward. The the amendments that are being made today are are were first uh looked at because of the internal conflict between two sections of the ordinance. And uh planning staff and legal went through those and looked at a solution. Uh the second issue is that there is literally a preemption under federal law for denying a uh addition to a tower or a change to a tower that is less than 10% uh in dimensions. And there's a complex process that we can look at, and that's what Edward is relating in his this application that he brought to you today. So he's going through that, he can go through that. We can deny the application and require them to go through a permitting process if it's greater than 10%. Um, so that's the review that he is undertaking. Um, and legally speaking, all of you have hit on different issues that will face us in the future. We don't have a small cell 5G network ordinance in place. I would recommend that we start a process to look at that. It's it's a while off. It isn't really happening in smaller communities yet. They're starting with the biggest places in the country because they have the most overload of the network there. The other thing I would encourage members of the public to do is, we have are severely limited both by federal law but also by state law. A state statute was passed a year ago uh which uh limits what the county can do on the small cells in our own right of way. And it would be the, my first step, I believe, and we on the Commission will, with the Commission will talk about it, um is suggesting changes to state law. We have a lot more influence and a lot more direct ability to look at what state law governs us. Right now, we're preempted by doing a lot of things in local regulation by our state statute. So that is one of the things we will have to look at as we join the community in looking at all of this. So we're looking at a very small amendment now for existing towers to bring us into compliance with federal law and to clarify our own law. Is it perfect? Probably not. Uh it's a real complex area and a constantly changing area to regulate uh because technology changes, and we're never able to keep up with technology. I have no idea at this point what we'll be facing in a year. Uh we may just get uh ordinance put in place on 5G and then 6G completely changes our world. But we're committed to try to do the best for the community we can. And in this instance, uh if we send this uh process through a permitting process, it is highly unlikely to be able to be accomplished within the 60-day shot clock that the federal government requires for these modifications of towers. And and I fully support from a legal perspective these amendments.
Thank you. Mr. Beal?
Mr. President, Chair.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Uh we will go ahead and open it up for public comments. We do have a staff member that will be timing the three minutes. Uh please come up and state your name. Just for the record, so we have that for you all, so that this audience will be able to participate. So again, um, we'd really, really like to focus on what the amendment that was presented by our planning department. And we understand there's a lot of concerns about uh what the future may bring in in um the technology sector potentially 5G. But um
The top lights.
We will use the time given for you all to we hear your, hear your comments, and those remarks will be taken. And we'll try to participate in the future with other public study, maybe work studies or others. So if you wish, uh, we'll start and open down the list if that's what we do. You have to be sworn in, I'm sorry. Who will be sworn in? Uh, this Martinez, part of the public hearing. Okay? Do we have the list?
Yes.
Go with the list, the folks. All right, so apologize if I don't say your name correctly. One of the other Commissioners might be able to help me out if you could, so. Um, Dan Kider?
That's correct. I'm sorry? My name is Dan Kider. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Beal. Um, I uh I'm a Taos resident. I retired from the Federal Aviation Administration in 2010. I was a director of air traffic patrol programs. So I can appreciate the challenges. Um, I'm I'm pretty familiar with dealing with all these issues that you're facing, and it's a tough job. Uh I'd like to, I'll make this really brief because we got a lot of people. Uh I just had a couple of specific comments regarding these changes. Uh and I think the first one is just clarification, just from my understanding. If if the Commission approves the change package today, uh in terms of the modification to existing towers, anything greater than a 25% modification would still require a special use permit because that is not included in your package. And that's not excluded. I think that's correct. And that, and that if you were going to address that, that would come later in a with the planning Commission and to work those changes later, greater than 25%. The second, uh my second comment is has to do uh with the definition of substantial, which is tied to the FCC 6409 order. And I understand the rock and the hard place, the pressure of the FCC. Um, but in my mind, substantial is a relative term. And what is substantial in an open area like Taos County versus substantial in a large city are two different animals, although the FCC would rather are. Um, now you you mentioned uh the 10% growth of a tower when you add antennas, but there's also that other part that allows you to grow that antenna by 20 feet. I think that's also part of that study that Mr. Beal called out in his staff report. So uh you could actually grow a tower by as much as 20 feet and still not cross the substantial threshold. And and that would look a lot different here in Taos as compared to a smaller place where you may not notice it as much. The other, and the other other point I would add is that um given the legal challenges to the FCC order, the over 200 cities that uh, you know, are suing in the Ninth Circuit Court, I would just question how quick we want to move out with certain things that could be set aside, could be turned over by the Circuit Court.
Time.
The uh, is that the time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in conclusion, I just want to say, we also have some, uh, I think you've had this already, the Larry O'Callaghan ideas about some changes. Okay, great, have wireless copies. And we do have a petition that was signed by over 900 people that are concerned about the rollout of 5G and how we manage that. And uh and they would like to see the county and the city do the due diligence to do it correctly.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael Henry Dunn. Uh, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I serve as the founding director of the Sacred Academy of Geo-Energetics Space and Creston, Colorado. I've been active for the last 10 years as an advocate for human rights issues related to the restoration of the rule of law of internationally in the US. And I'm co-host of the internet program Radio 5G, which serves to awaken and inform the public to the evidence of the dangers of EMF and Wi-Fi associated with small cell tower densification and the rollout of 5G. I work closely with the Taos Alliance for Public Health and Safety. Um, the issue that I'm going to focus on very quickly here is has to do with the FCC uh compliance issue. Now, obviously, there's great concern in the community, as can be seen by this very full room, um regarding the documented dangers and serious risks to health associated with small cell tower densification, including particularly to children and the elderly, to the biosphere, and to the famous beauty of Taos and to property values. It's important to review briefly what the telecommunications industry is telling us with regard to 5G rollout. A recent rating interview by an executive here in Taos with it Carson Electric stated that there is no uh danger whatsoever, that it is no big deal, that, and moreover, that it's the law, it's the FCC, everybody needs to just calm down. Well, um, it's important to note that if we're supposed to ignore this, uh, there are, we're talking about the United States Conference of Mayors representing 1,192 cities suing the FCC over force of compliance. It's a 10th amendment issue, that the 10th amendment to the Constitution states, as I'm sure you know, power is not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the states or reserved to the states respectively, or to the people. And there are many instances in which the Supreme Court on a 10th amendment basis saw regulatory overreach, such as being mandated by the FCC based on 1996 law, um where the Supreme Court has found that uh that this was overreach and needed to be changed. Twenty-six thousand scientists and medical experts have signed an international appeal to halt the rollout of 5G based on health concerns. The city of Rome, the city of Brussels, the capital of the EU, where a public official recently stated, "The health of the citizens of Brussels is not mine to sell for profit." So we have our time.
Wow.
Not yet, oh, it's still rolling. So um essentially, if you do ask, as Commissioner Donald is suggesting, and look at the fact that first of all, there are over 200 cities that are suing the FCC on a 10th amendment basis over overriding local regulatory authority, um that taking the time to implement thoughtful regulatory changes so that these serious and well-documented health concerns, if you ever, Dr. Chairman Goldberg, a moment, are honored and that you take the time to revise the land use rights as it was suggested. Thank you so much for your time.
We really got to try to stay as close to the three minutes as we can. We got a long list here. Uh we got like about five, six pages, so please try to follow the order of the three minutes. Um, Dr. Goldberg?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Sharon Goldberg. I'm an internal medicine physician, and I'm voluntary associate professor in in medicine at University of New Mexico. Uh I'm here today because concerned residents invite me to come to speak about the biological effects of microwave radiation. Such as we're all, we all understand, microwave radiation isn't just about what comes out of your oven. Microwave radiation is inundated by the cell towers that we're discussing, cell phones, many of the devices that we use. And we are essentially inundated by it in our daily lives. Microwave radiation has clearly established major effects on human physiology. It's been published in tens of thousands of peer-reviewed literature, excuse me, tens of thousands of peer-reviewed articles. And we even have entire books that have been published on the subject. This is from 1976, Biological Effects of Microwave Radiation. And it really, what we know is that the basic science on the effects of microwaves is very, very clear. We know that, so the way that microwave exposure works on humans in cells is that it interrupts essential housekeeping functions in cells, and it does this at the cellular level. So just to give you a couple of examples, microwaves interfere with energy production in our mitochondria. Microwaves damage our DNA. Microwaves cause leakage of the blood-brain barrier, the layer that protects our brain and controls what goes in and out. And most importantly, microwaves are clearly established to cause oxidative stress, which is linked with essentially every single condition of civilization that we deal with. Diabetes, dementia, cardiovascular disease, stroke, and, you know, I only have three minutes, so can't really go into it. But when the normal functions at the cellular level are compromised, it's it's not surprising that health is is not really a reasonable expectation. So what's important for you to understand is that there's no debate or controversy about the health effects of microwave radiation in humans. We have clear evidence of harm now. We have so much evidence that we have enough to classify microwave radiation as a class one carcinogen, that we have clear evidence that it causes cancer. And the, we have evidence from the National Toxicology Cell Phone Study, if this was a $30 million study, the gold standard of exposure studies showed that microwaves cause clear evidence of cancer of the brain, heart, DNA damage, and cardiomyopathy, which is a precursor to congestive heart failure. So I think I'm running out of time, so I'm going to skip this and just get to some other points. Really, what are, what are the, can I have an extra minute?
If it pertains to the amendment, I'll give you a minute. If it's not to the amendment, we gotta, look guys, we gotta stick to what is being presented by the amendment. By the order of Mr. Chairman, again, I get
By the order of Mr. Chairman, there are rules and regulations for public hearings as sent forth in the Open Meetings Act. We're not complying with it this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Donald. This is a public hearing on presented amendments only. I understand that there's a wealth of information about what, you know, all these microwaves and and the 5G and everything else is going to happen. If you are opposed of what we're doing with the amendment, please come forward and speak your piece. If you want to talk to us about 5G and all the things that are going to happen in the next five to 10 years, we understand that that is a different meeting and it's a different setting in which we are trying to get going through our our presentation from the amendment. And, you know, I I I understand, like I said, there might have been some interpretation that this was about 5G, and that's why a lot of you are here, that you're here against or for the presented amendments to our ordinance. I'd ask that those of you who are using, you know.
So I I'm not talking about 5G. I'm just talking about microwaves, which is, this has to do with the existing networks, with what that extra 10% things that are going to hog towers. So anyway, I'll just go back to my, so what are the implications for, so we know that microwave radiation is clearly, it's it's clearly associated with with many of the chronic conditions. Mental illness, including depression, bipolar, infertility. The implication to people that are already disabled by chronic diseases relates to the ordinance. Many Taos residents suffer from conditions that easily qualify as a disability under the Americans, the ADA, including cancer, heart problems. Microwave radiation exacerbates all of these conditions and many others, including microwave syndrome. So further expansion of wireless infrastructure, even if it's only 10% that's proposed in the ordinance to just go without, you know, free passing, without permitting, interferes with the rights of the disabled to function in society, to access essential services, and potentially to be safe in their own homes, even if it's an existing tower, a new antenna made larger. So I wanted to talk about economics and diabetes, but do I have another minute, or is that? No, okay, all right. So just to summarize, please note that the proposed ordinance changes, it seems that they selectively benefit the wireless industry at the expense of Taos residents' health and well-being.
Dr. Tim Shukow? Checklet. 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 Thank you for speaking. Yes, I do. Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tim Shekley, Dr. Tim Shekley, and International Consultant in Computer and Communications Engineering Policy and Policy. I develop technical standards for communication networks for consumer and industrial markets on behalf of the Telecommunications Industries Association and the American National Standards Institute, and for standards for the International Electric Technical Commission, the IEC, and the International Organization for Standardization, ISO, Geneva. I am also, I would like to offer this, I am author of this one hundred and fifty-page report, Reinventing Wires: The Future of Landlines and Networks, from the National Institute for Science on Public Policy in Washington. This report, written for policymakers and public officials like yourself, explains the technology of wired and wireless communication networks, as well as the policy and the history of how we got into the situation we're in today. First of all, let me say that it is the mission of public officials to protect and defend the interests of the public, of the public, its property and rights of way. And note that our environment is part of the public rights of way. The wireless industries, state and federal wireless, small cell, and 5G laws and rules have been manipulated by corporate interests to appropriate our public spaces and rights of way for public, private profit. This is an unacceptable situation. We are not helpless, as some would believe, so you, and you as public officials, in all due respect, must either act or step aside. There are things you can do. It is time to refine and also strengthen wireless cell regulations, not back off in deference to federal and state overreach. We, the people, will not intend to sit, do not intend to sit still for this tyranny of corporations seeking to overflow, overthrow the public sovereignty by expropriation of the public's property and rights of way to serve the interests of their own corporate managers and shareholders. Taos is in a unique position, because you have an electric utility that already has installed a fiber optic network. You now need to get that fiber to all the people in their homes and businesses, and first, first of all, as a public utility, internet fiber is like the electricity, water, sewer, and streets, a public utility. If you get the fiber to the people, they won't need so many antennas everywhere. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
It's Dr. Stephen Schneider, Spanish. Beauty is an experience, nothing else. It is not a fixed pattern or an arrangement of features. It is something felt, a glow, or a communicated sense of kindness. The human soul needs actual beauty even more than bread. These are quotations from D.H. Lawrence. I am a literary scholar, a literary critic. I've published over ten books, literary criticism in my own work. These quotations by Lawrence explain why artists, writers, and musicians from all over the world have come to Taos. Like Lawrence, the artists in the famous Taos Society of Artists, like the Taos Martens and the myriad of other cultural creators who are in this room today, have come here for the experience that only the beauty of Taos can provide. It's interesting to note that just recently, the California Supreme Court sided with the city of San Francisco in a dispute with T-Mobile, saying the city has the authority to limit small cell antennas and 5G infrastructure for aesthetic reasons. The law said that aesthetics were critical to the city's tourist industry. More antennas will disturb, will disfigure the aesthetics of our very special community with its cultural attractions. Will lead to depreciation of property values, as well as depreciation of the aesthetics of Taos. Tom Mueller, the mayor of Oregon, said in a US conference of mayors event that it was a misguided invasion of local authority, in reference to the FCC rules. In the past, Taos County has been willing to defend the civil rights of its citizens over federal administrative policies. This is another such time. There may be some people who think that more towers means better communication, and this will improve the tourism dollars in the county of Taos. Well, that's far from the truth. The latest installment of Destination Next, a series about the world's most interesting places and how travel is changing, may note that more and more tourists are looking for a true vacation, need to disconnect. While resorts once doubted for wireless internet as a must-have amenity, they're now beginning to recognize themselves as places too unplugged. We haven't touched, okay, I like what I do. No more antennas, it's not a good idea.
For recording purposes, those that speak, pause, so after the applause, you can get your recording, because if you continue to speak while they're applauding, we can't get everything down, so. We're going with Jeannie Lott.
I think I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you. Reese Murphy.
My name is Reese Merson, thank you. Murphy, thank you.
Do you have my time? 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 Yes.
Thank you very much, all the pressures, thank you. We are very clear that this particular land ordinance is not necessarily directly saying 5G, but we know that there's an opening for telecommunications companies to come in and do whatever they want, and we don't mark that for our community. And myself and Jeannie Lott are the people that started to understand about 5G in February, and we're concerned for, I'm concerned for my children and my grandchildren, and maybe I don't look old enough to have grandchildren, but I do, I have four grandsons. And they're all looking at the same issue about 5G, coming into their own cities. My daughter's in Albuquerque with my four-year-old grandson. My other son is in Portland, Oregon, and 5G is already being installed. And what we gotta be clear about is that 4G is already doing damage to all of us, and we are not saying stop progression, but let's stop and pause and think about what we're doing here as a community to ourselves. And let's get the kind of deep regulations that we can do, even with the FCC and even with the state law. We can actually have deeper regulations that say how this is going to be rolled out and done in a way that's smart, and not putting this up, the towers right in front of a school or right in our public right of ways. I think we do have the police power of the Tenth Amendment over these land use ordinances and over these particular laws. And so, for me personally, I'm concerned about for all of us, and we're all here together. This is for you too. You live here, and I really want all of us to work together as a community, and it's not about us and them. I mean, really, that's what I might put out. This is about all of us working together as a community to let's, let's not, let's not endanger ourselves with more radiation, and let's be clear, 4G will stay, so we have all of that emitting right now, and we're learning how to deal with that physically. But 5G is a layer cake. It will come in on top of 4G, and then we will have millimeter microwave radiation coming at us, as well as the radiation from 4G. I feel like I can even heal in the same way that I used to be able to heal my own body. I've been a professional massage therapist and practitioner for twenty-three years, and I'm watching people come into my practice who can't heal or are getting autoimmune diseases that they can't then cure. And we know that many, many results of all of these studies is that this, these autoimmune diseases are being caused by all of this overexposure to radioactive radiation. And so, that is what I'd like to say, is that's, hey, let's work together, and I'd like to submit these on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Lommer.
I'm Mr. Hammer.
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 Okay. I haven't really listened to the talk and everything, but I've fallen out.
Do you have my time? 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 Hi, my name is Brian Hammer, and I was a civil rights trial lawyer for ten years. Before starting a company, we got seventeen years ago called The Likeable Lawyer, which one of the, before starting a company called The Likeable Lawyer, and I teach ethics and conflict resolution skills to lawyers. I understand that there's a need to harmonize this ordinance. I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell that it doesn't go far enough, and what I'm hearing is that the FCC is taking away Taos County power. The state is trying to take away Taos County power. Regulation permitting is the power that you have remaining, don't give any of it away, because, as much as, and one of the principles of The Likeable Lawyer is, be careful when you think you already know the answer. There's a real danger in that arrogance, because we stop listening to information. As you're hearing, the body of scientific research is growing, that there are dangers here. Don't give away any power. Hold on to it because you're going to need it. You have a very important role, you don't realize it yet perhaps, but you have a very important role. We can't trust FCC, we can't trust the federal government, we can't trust big business. This is not the first time this has happened. Al Gore did a documentary about twenty-five years ago about global warming. There was a small number of doctors and scientists at that point that warned us about global warming. They were dismissed as what? Conspiracy theorists, alarmists. They were dehumanized. That's the way that the big business tries to delegitimize real issues. Thank goodness we have the Aaron Brockeliches of the world that will stand up to tobacco. These people are here because they're concerned about their children as well. Don't give away any power, zero. Don't give away any regulatory power. Take very small, measured steps and make sure that these regulations hold on to as much power as possible. Please, you have a very important role. Thank you very much.
We go to the Burges.
Do you have my time? 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 I do. I respectfully request the Commissioners of Taos County to keep public sentiment and vote no to change the Taos County land use regulations, or if change is required, to adapt the change of land use regulations to protect public health and safety, to preserve the scenic beauty of Taos County, and to maintain the cultural and historic heritage of Taos. Two hundred cities across our country are currently suing the FCC for unconstitutional overreach. Let's pause, take a look at the facts supporting these lawsuits. Let's not pave the way through a change in our land use regulation for large telecommunications companies to install unsightly and harmful towers, towers. Until more scientific studies are complete, let's discern whether or not this technology is safe. Let's pause. Thank you.
Do you have my time? Do you have my time? Do you have my time? Yes. First, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to speak and for this forum. I have a phobia in speaking in front of groups, but here I am. So, I am a father, a researcher. I was born in Silicon Valley, in Santa Clara, very researched in different technologies. And so, the first thing that I'm going to say isn't necessarily related to my concerns about being exposed to electromagnetic frequencies, but it does pertain. So, under the Freedom of Information Act, the CIA, there was a huge lawsuit where they had to disclose twenty thousand pages of documentation pertaining to experimentation against the US population using different mind control technologies. They used diodes at the time, and they used psychedelic drugs, these are facts. So, and there is early crowdfunding campaign for them to release even more information about what they were experimenting on against the US population. So, fast forward to today, there are twenty-three US patents on using electromagnetic frequencies to control the human brain. These are facts. And so, I asked myself, I asked my friends, I asked my family, do you think that these, these brain damaged people have rolled up their carpets and are no longer using, you know, experimenting on people in the ways that they have been proven to in the past? I don't think they have. So, I guess just to say, I feel deeply concerned about continued exposure to these electromagnetic frequencies, 4G. The human brain operates between four to eighty hertz. 4G cell technology is operating from two point two to two point four gigahertz up to that. If you translate forty hertz to two point four gigahertz, that's two billion times stronger than the human brain. 5G can be up to two hundred billion times stronger. That's alarming to me. I'm, it isn't fun, thank you.
Do you have my time? 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 Please say your name.
Hi, Commissioner. Thanks for our opportunity to speak. Speak up.
I am a concerned mother here in Taos. I'm concerned about the impact of low-frequency pulsing microwave radiation on life, especially our children and youth. It is a fact that they are impacted tenfold by radiation. My intention is to join with educators in Taos County to create policies for our schools and daycares that promote safe technology in schools, and also to help families become more informed about how to safely handle EMF emitting devices. I understand and agree that access to technology is vital for all, especially our youth. So, why isn't Kid Carson being pressed to supply fiber optics to everyone first and foremost? I can't sit around and let a hijacked regulations committee continue to overlook our children's safety any longer. And as our elected officials, you are sworn to protect our entire community in the same way that I, as a mother, am bound to protect my children. I'm looking out for our safety and our well-being, and you were supposed to be representing the people and what the people represent, and what, and we're here today telling you what that is. We want tougher, tighter land use regulations to protect us from these telecom companies who want to set up their unregulated equipment where we live, work, and go to school, recrey, et cetera. And this means small cell antennas. There's already a problem, we already have an issue. Thank you. where we live, work, and go to school, recrey, etc. And this means small cell antennas. There's already a problem. We already have an issue. Thank you.
Barbara Underwood?
Barbara Underwood. I encourage you to spend time and look at the depths of this and the ramifications. Someone else has said that it does open the door. And I'd like to see that door not open quite so welcomingly and so other ramifications of that access would be. Thank you.
With me, AKA Molly? Molly. Molly. Nevin.
Good morning, everybody. We're all here together, in this together. And I was trying to go haranguing about 5G because I'm really, really, really concerned. But I wanted to just insert some optimism. Okay. Why? Because I went to the taoscounty.gov website. And I read its mission statement. Quote, "We're an open county government protecting the health, safety, welfare, and environment of its citizens." It resonates. What you're saying here resonates with our group here. We're together in this. And I just want to have that phrase inspiring more research and sound decision making.
Marianne Delort?
Marianne Delort.
Delaney?
I'm Marianne Delaney. I have a background in healthcare. I ran an organic farm. I write. My concern is the court of judenot that's coming in on our private world, which is very magical and beautiful. If we look at history, the big tobacco lives that were brought into our world as a legitimate and good and playful item, and it's only years later that the cancer develops. Another example would be Monsanto, which has had revolving door carte blanche with the FDA and the USDA. They have not been friends for agriculture or to us as people. The telecom industry has no oversight. Zero. And Congress has been enriched to ensure that. What we already have existing, the Wi-Fi hotspot at the library before, and the schools that are totally Wi-Fi, seem like a really good idea. Infinite connectivity. But the health ramifications, as have been much better described than I can do, are real. They're global. There are countries that are saying, oh, for God's sake, have you lost your minds? Yesterday, the Prime Minister of Poland came out asking for a moratorium on 5G implementation because we already are excessively radiated. And we've allowed it to happen. Telecom was clever. They said, your children must have cell phones. It will keep them safe because you can be incompact not knowing that little brains are much more affected by EMF, by electromagnetic radiation. So, we have marched ahead thinking it was a good idea. And we're learning after the effect that we have random degenerative diseases on our lives, including neurological ones. Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, autism. And there is an implication that the radiation, as we now imagine as normal, is causing a health crisis. And we're also losing our power as localities. And I hope you will remember that when you remember us and this legislation.
And Molly? I thought I was signing a name to attend the meeting and not the speech. Okay, Molly. Thank you. We got Joseph Bigley?
I'm going to try to keep this as short as I can.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
State your name.
Joe Bigley. I'm going to try to keep this as simple as I can and do it as quick as I can because everybody's covered it quite well already. I was originally a grad student at Colorado University. Carl Sagan was my primary teacher for 20 years based on the kind of jobs I had. So, energy is something I spent a little time thinking about. Energy is a vibration. I'll keep it simple. I also taught history for a while, so I'll keep it simple. Energy is a vibration. Is the frequency is how rapid it vibrates? The amplitude is how far it vibrates, up and down, all around. 4G is a generation of wireless technology that radiates energy. It had been proven to cause destruction to cells in all life forms when the frequency and amplitude is too high. It jiggles the molecules in our cells. And that's how we end up thinking of cancer and a whole list of other problems. So, like I said, I'm going to keep this short. I've got a lot to say about it except that we have to take into consideration the health of our community. 4G is a wireless concept. And 5G is an advancement of wireless concept, which will create a great deal of vibration, which we've seen already, which has been proven to cause a lot of serious problems. And so, we need... Hard wire does not release that kind of energy. And so, we might need to go back to that. The other is radiation will be intrigued by that. Biggest difference between plutonium radiation and those kinds of big molecules is just their frequency and their amplitude. Energy is all one thing. It's a vibration. That's all it is. So, when you start releasing those vibrations in higher levels, higher frequencies and higher amplitudes, you will destroy all life forms out. It will be like Venus that emerges. And it's coming quickly. We've got... That's all I have to say.
Valerie Barton? Valerie Barton? For the most, she has sent. Carl Burdick? We're halfway through. There's another 20 roughly that are speaking. Hi, Catherine Sings. Gusterson, Gusterson. She here?
Azalea Gusterson. Good afternoon now, commissioners. Thanks for hearing all of us here. A lot has been said, and I just want to put some emphasis on one thing. There was a lot of talk about how these amendments aren't perfect, but there's something, and that this is ever changing. And maybe it's just a stepping stone. But I think there's a big difference between not perfect and a step in the wrong direction. And someone had mentioned that these amendments are basically giving an open door for new antennas on existing sites to a large industry. And I feel like morally, I would hope that you all feel more inclined to represent the citizens in your county and protect the safety of those citizens rather than cater to large industries. And the whole new amendments are saying, well, all it is is existing uninvented now. This gentleman could decide to waive permits or waive fees based on size, based on one part of the existing code. I don't see the point of opening that door even wider to allow these companies to come in without permits and then not pay, which is to a company like this, they're saying higher fees. $500 is nothing to T-Mobile. And so, the idea that we're making small changes and it can be changed again later, and we're just going to slip this in now because, you know, why not? Doesn't make any sense to me. This is giving an open door and a free thing to a giant corporation that has nobody's safety or well-being in mind. I just don't see why it would be approved or voted upon. And if changes need to be made to come into compliance or to bring two parts of our code into cohesion, maybe moving in the other direction and saying, okay, well, we're going to change this other part that says we can waive all this and require them to apply for a permit and to pay their fee. And so, I think just to put a little emphasis on the point that we're not here to give to the large corporations. And not perfect and a step in the wrong direction are two very different things. And just speaking for myself and the people that are part of my life and a lot of the people hearing what they've said, this is not the direction we want to go in. So, that being said, thank you for your time and have a lovely afternoon.
Sage in the room? Sage Keegan? Falcon Britt?
My name is Falcon Britt. I'm an retired English teacher for many years, led many departments. Was also a double major at West Forest, studying prevent science. And I did graduate work there, and I'm also a nurse. So, I recently did verbal skills. I may not be a scientist, but I can speak to this with some degree of intelligence. I have a few questions. One is that when the modification says it does provide exclusions for technological reasons. Technological is a very broad term. Technological could include 5G, obviously. If I were a 5G company, I would certainly argue that if I came to the courts, if I came to your county. It says it's a technological reason. I see no reason I can't put my extremely toxic antenna here. It's not any bigger. They don't mention that these smaller antennas are far more toxic. Millimeter waves are much... They killed... The research is just starting to come in. When they turned it on, they said, Nevin, it runs. All the animals were dying. The kids all had nosebleeds and nothing. And the teen suicide rate went up. This is not a minor thing. There's a lot of things people apparently will do in the industry for money. And we would be willing to protect us. So I do have some questions. Where will the small cell antennas go? How many antennas will be placed around our city? How close will they be? Will it be every 100 to 300 feet? As has been cited in some studies. Will they be as strong? I read in Tech Magazine where they said they could be as much as 300 gigahertz. And gigahertz, as big as a hurt your cells literally will not be able to hear each other. And that's what causes the deterioration. If your family's friends have diabetes, that's what develops. If it's neurodegenerative disorder, that's what develops. So, when are they coming? I called Verizon. They said, we plan to be there by January. We called T-Mobile. We called AT&amp;T. Oh, it'll be there by spring. Somebody in their industry certainly has expectations. So this is not far off consideration. What are the plans of the county? Who are the telecom companies? And who will install these small cells? How do we know that they will abide by regulations? What regulations would be in place for those? Also, which telecoms have approached Kit Carson Electric Cooperative? Do we know? What role does Kit Carson Electric have in this implementation process? How will the public be informed about any of this? What fees are involved? And who will profit from it? Mr. Bellis, have any telecommunications companies approached you?
Not here.
He's not here. And finally, Mr. Bigwell, who are the companies that are approaching you? I believe you said no one has. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I find it interesting. Might as well things that were said in KCEC by some other people. I'll leave that in other people's hands to speak with you about. Please, finally, please protect us. And as a disabled person, I think that you will reasonably respect... Mr. Attorney, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Randy Audio.
Randy. I think that we will probably see some lawsuits that you'll have to field under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Nanette Lainey?
My name is Nanette Lainey. I'm a Taos County resident. I'd like to speak to the proposed amendment first, and then I need, I'm compelled to tell you a personal story because I have microwave burns. And I don't like speaking about my health issues. But, you know. So, the proposed amendment looks at size and dimensions and all those things. It does not look at the health impacts, increased numbers of antenna, changes in powers and frequencies. And the result in health impacts, including the cumulative impacts of more and more and more microwave radiation, which we're all being inundated with right now. And I respectfully request that you take this into consideration. I'm very well aware of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which makes it illegal to oppose these things based on health concerns. But I do not find that ethical at all. It's not appropriate to be making decisions that are contrary to supporting public health. So, two years ago, I left Taos because I was very ill. And I thought it had to do with outdoor air quality. And at that time, I was having mild issues with microwave frequencies, including internet Wi-Fi routers, cell phones and cellphone towers. So I moved to an area that I believed was fairly electromagnetically safe as well as having excellent air quality. In January, two HughesNet Generation 5 internet routers were sighted near where I was living. Now, this is not 5G technology. I believe this is 4G technology. I became extremely ill immediately. This is the middle of January. I ended up in my car. I could not live in my house. I was way too sick to remain. I just want to read to you some of my ongoing current symptoms. I'm really sick right now. It's probably going to take me two to three days to recover. I cannot...